Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to an order Clayton City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone could please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to our consent calendar. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there any questions on consent calendar?
We have approval.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, so that passes unanimously, which gets us to our first item, which is a lengthy item of recognitions and presentations, which is the fun part. I think we have somebody here from Shelter in Place Education, right? Is there somebody? No. Okay. So then I'm going to sit down for a moment. So I do have, we're going to mail this out. So there is a proclamation here for declaring November 6th, 2019 as a Shelter in Place Education Day. It's essentially where public and private schools and childcare centers throughout Contra Costa County will be participating in the Shelter in Place Drill on November 6th. The Contra Costa County Community Awareness Emergency Response Group is sponsoring the 18th Annual Shelter in Place Drill, and they'll be assisting schools and childcare centers with their emergency preparedness. So with this, we'll mail the proclamation to the right people, but we are essentially, as I said, proclaiming November 6th as the Shelter in Education Place. So then we'll move on to other items. So we have a number of Do the Right Thing Awards here. I think we're going to do a little bit of catch-up first on courage and responsibility. If we could have Mount Diablo School Principal, Mrs. Bannister, come up here, and then if we could have Alyssa Texera, Ashley Pyleen, Robert Pryor, and Jacob Jensen to come up here.
Good evening. I apologize, I missed a few. I usually never miss any, but I missed a few, so I appreciate you letting us bring some more students. So let's start with, I made some notes because the teachers said some wonderful things about all our students, and I have to say the ones that we have chosen are exemplary students. And first of all, I want to say the students that I bring, I think I really want to compliment their parents because they really have taught them well at home, and they come to school ready to learn and being very respectful and always doing the right thing. So I appreciate all the parents that bring us these wonderful young people. So courage, we'll start with courage. Alyssa, the teacher says, "So sweet and caring." She always has a smile on her face and the confidence behind her back. She's a second-year yearbook student who is one of the editors this year, and she courageously addresses the yearbook staff as a whole through her leadership and by having tough conversations with individual staffers regarding their effort and commitment in meeting deadlines, which is a wonderful skill that's going to take her far in life when she gets into the working force. And she is often the voice of reason in a stressful environment. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And next we have Ashley here, and she's a true go-getter who's not shy. Her passions with photography really highlight her skills. When she is interested in something, she is passionate and she really goes for it. She also is in debate class and has taken on some challenging topics and was influential in changing the mind of her peers by effectively presenting different points of view. In yearbooks, she's taken hundreds of insightful photos of students with compassion and persistence, something that is becoming increasingly difficult in this selfie-driven age. So congratulations. And then responsibility. So we have, are we doing responsibility?
Yeah.
Oh, Mia. Mia's. Yes, you did.
Go ahead, yeah.
You want me to do responsibility?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need Jake up here, too. Aren't these amazing young people? They make Diablo View very proud. So Mia, she comes to class with a smile on her face every day. She's always polite and respectful to the teachers and other students. Mia completes her work on time, and with every assignment, she goes above and beyond what is asked. Mia is punctual and reliable. She holds herself to a high standard. She puts forth a tremendous amount of effort into anything she attempts. The teachers say she's a student they can always count on to help the teachers and as well as others. She's incredibly well-mannered, humble, and polite, who surrounds herself with really good people. Congratulations. And Jake. Jake always gets the job done, no matter what the task at hand. He's confident, proud, and a leader. He's a phenomenal student. With any assignment given, Jake can effectively manage other group members and use his leadership skills to complete the task, which sometimes is difficult with middle schoolers. I'm sure Jake will admit. He's polite and respectful to his teachers and peers. Jake is not afraid to ask for help and puts pride and effort into his schoolwork. Congratulations. Do you want me to do respect? Okay, we're going to go for respect. So Jacob, Jacob here is our only seventh grader, so that's saying a lot. Usually it's eighth graders that have risen to the top, but Jacob already has risen to the top. He's the seventh grader that's kind and respectful, and you can always tell he cares about others. He's an outstanding young man who, on a daily basis, knows what a student needs to do to be successful. When thinking of the character trait of respect, Jacob is always polite and considerate of others. He gives his best effort in whatever he undertakes. While there may be chaos all around him, which I sometimes see, Jacob is focused and can always be counted on to be doing the right thing. Jacob is well-respected by his peers and teachers. As a seventh grader, he truly demonstrates the character qualities that will bring him success in all his adventures. Congratulations. Next we have Robert. Robert for respect is truly interested in the conversations he's having as well as his interactions with others. He's a well-raised young gentleman who is very polite in all aspects. He has a respectful and humble demeanor. He gives thoughtful answers and asks genuine questions when learning about difficult subjects such as slavery, war, and the Holocaust. He has respect for education as well as the world around him. Robert lives, and we are all very familiar with this, is he lives in a high-fire zone in Clayton. His family has been dealing with protecting their home and ranch with little to no electricity. Robert never complains about the situation. Instead, he has incredible respect for the people, his family, neighbors, firefighters, PG&E workers, who are all working tirelessly to save the land, houses, and animals. He appreciates and respects his parents and grandparents, who work very hard to provide a good life for him. Robert knows that anything in life worthwhile comes with working diligent. His future aspirations include to be educated and either work for CAL FIRE to protect California or work in the military in some capacity to protect our country. Is that true? So those are our wonderful students. But while I'm up here, we have some new bracelets that I was going to give. No, Diablo View's finished. We don't have any more. But these are our new bracelets. Kindness Matters, and it says gratitude, humility, and respect. So those are some things that, so I brought one for all of you to
Thank you.
Can wear. And then we're done.
Thank you. Perfect. So we'll call you all up for a group photo with the other school recipients as well. So let's give them one round of applause. Okay. So our press is direct, no, okay. So then we have a couple from Mount Diablo Elementary for respect. If I could have a teacher from there who is, and then also Alex Jensen and Colton Roberts. And I think Alex is becoming a regular in our meetings.
Thank you, City of Clayton, for recognizing two of our amazing second-grade students. Robert Colton is a superstar in every way. He truly is one of the kindest students you will meet. I have so many stories to share of him, and the one that I'm going to share is probably the most recent. He came a couple weeks ago when he found out that Alex was also going to get the award, and he was so excited for his buddy Alex to get it. So this just shows what a kind and considerate young man he is. He exemplifies the character trait of respect and is a wonderful role model for his classmates and peers. He raises his hand to speak, listens when others are talking, follows directions, and is so considerate of other people's feelings. Yes, please, and thank you are common words Colton uses, and his great manners are contagious. Congratulations, Colton. You are so deserving of this award, and I'm so proud to be your teacher this year.
And I am lucky enough to be Alex's teacher this year, and Alex is a respectful role model amongst our second-grade class and our school community. He shows his peers respect by being a great friend who is always willing to help those who are struggling. Alex chooses kindness and portrays respectful behaviors on the playground and in our classroom by including others at all times, those that don't have a friend to play with. Alex is always the first to ask them and using his polite manners. He is extremely respectful to myself as his teacher by actively listening while I am teaching and quickly following the directions given. Alex is well-liked by his classmates, and we are so lucky to share our school days with such a respectful and responsible boy. Thank you, Alex.
Great, thank you. And then let's call, we have a couple from Clayton Valley Charter High School, so we'll call you back all up, so don't go anywhere yet. So we have somebody from Clayton Valley Charter High School, and then we have Mason Oakley and Joey Sobron. Come on up.
I'm going to have these guys introduce their people that they have with them, so they get introduced first.
All right, hello, I'm Mason Oakley. I'm a mom here, my father, my father's girlfriend.
Hi, I'm Joey Sobron. My father, Sidney Sobron, is here, as well as my mother, Rebecca Sobron.
Very good. First of all, I'd just like to say I moved here two and a half years ago from Virginia, and this is a great place to live. I don't live in here, but I work at Clayton Valley, but a great place to, whatever you guys are doing, keep doing it. So it's been an enjoyable time. These two young men, I would not have any, I do attendance and I've done discipline at Clayton Valley. I have not had any contact with these two guys for attendance or discipline, not one thing. I went back and looked, because he was here a year before me, Joey was, and there's nothing on there. There's nothing on their attendance-wise, there's nothing on there that way. Not one time has a teacher or another student came to me with a problem with these guys. So that tells me right then and there that they are doing the little things behind the scenes that make the culture of your school very good and excellent, and it continues to build it and get it better and better. So I'm really proud, really proud of these guys. They are both going to be Division One baseball players, which is, you know, Mason as a junior is already committed, Joey is already also committed. As you know, Coach Coakley runs a very tough baseball program. They're there at 7:00 every morning before school starts, and they put in a lot of hard work and a lot of effort. And these guys are, I think, the leaders. I know it's hard to find leaders in 2,200 people that they're going to follow one person, but these guys are doing the right thing all the time at our school. And I think especially when they're not around mom and dad, when they're away, they're at a mall, they're off-campus, they're still doing the right thing and making sure that their peers are doing the right thing and putting positive peer group pressure on our school, which is a great help to myself and a great help to our school. So very proud of these guys and want to give them their awards.
So we have, so we typically, so we've done the Do the Right Thing program for about eight or nine years, and we typically do it through our schools. We do six different themes throughout the year, and then we bring them up to our city council to get recognized for students. We now also have a pilot program for Making a Difference, which recognizes some adults in our community. But we have one additional Do the Right Thing Award tonight for four individuals, and I know that there, a lot of our community members do awesome things in our community that go completely unnoticed most of the time and really should be recognized. So we don't often learn about those things, but we didn't learn about this thing, so we want to recognize a couple of the people. If I could have Patrick Brenna and Karik Duggan come up, along with John Khashabi. So, and is Karik here?
No.
Okay, okay. Well, you'll deliver the message then. But what we wanted to recognize you guys is about a week ago, a little more than a week ago, on a Sunday, in the Morgan Territory area, we had another fire, and there are a number of homes there that came really close to a number of homes and threatened, and wildfires are extremely scary. And, you know, all of you did something very exemplary that deserves to be recognized. And I want to talk a little bit about Patrick Brenna and your brother Karik first. You know, as a parent, you raise your kids hoping and thinking that they'll do the right thing when the time comes. And from what I understand, not only did you guys know what to do, you also did have the courage to do the right thing. So I understand that the fire broke on Sunday at 6:10 a.m. when you were leaving for work.
Yeah.
That's early on a Sunday to leave for work, first of all. But I understand that you saw the fire coming down the hill, quickly ran back, drove back home, got your family up, cut your family out of the house within five minutes, and then I think you proceeded to gather your younger brother and dogs and started to drive to safety. But I think, that's awesome, but I think on your way out, a tree had fallen down and was blocking the way. I think you pushed through it anyway with some damage to your car in the process. So, and I think Brenna, I think you were there, you know, you were leaving the house with your mom, and I think on your way out, and you realized that you really need to alert your neighbors. I think it was 6:00 a.m. in the morning, so none of the neighbors were up. So I think you jumped the fence and started knocking on some of your neighbors' doors. I think you then proceeded to call 911. I think you were the first one to call 911. And I think throughout this whole experience, I think all of you, I mean, this was in an area and time when you did not have power, you barely had any cellphone reception, so I think you kept dialing 911 multiple times until you finally reached through and were able to get them to come. But not only that, I think you had driven your younger brother to safety, came back to Morgan Territory, were helping your dad then to actually put out the fire, and helped in that way. So pretty awesome. Then I think John, I understand that you live nearby as well, and I, you know, when I first heard about you and we connected about whether you'd be available to come here on a Tuesday night, I then later in the day, I think the word got around in your neighborhood pretty quickly. I got a call from another neighbor who said recognizing you was absolutely spot-on and very well-deserved. I understand you are a reserve firefighter, also were a reserve police officer for Concord PD, and I think you responded, I think not only do you, you responded with your water tanker and fire truck, meaning your own fire truck and water tanker. I think there was a guest house at 420 Lion that was set on fire and the wall was burning. I think you put out that fire. I think the deck in the main house was also on fire. You put out that, too. So this was all before CAL FIRE, probably 30 minutes before CAL FIRE arrived. So I'm sure you're an extremely popular neighbor, and I think any one of us would love to have you as a neighbor, including with your equipment. So I think today we want to recognize the three individuals here and Karik for just doing the right thing, for being courageous and being responsible, and just appreciate for what you've done and say thank you. Thank you very much. So I think our press wants to get some photos of all of the recipients, so I don't know.
Our press not only wants to get photos, our press wants to say thank you, all of you, because I have returned all of the side of my car. That fire came very, very close. We were not only, we were not only without electricity, we were without landlines. They were down as well, so we were cut off.
You need the microphone, Tamara.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
And let's have the students come up as well, and we'll take a picture. Do you want one? We'll take a separate picture, yeah. So let's give them one more round of applause.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to say a couple of things. I appreciate you guys recognizing everyone who helped. It was dark, it was scary, and all the neighbors coming together, it gives you such a sense of community, where people are grabbing shovels and hoses and friends like Brad Wood. Do you mind if Brad Wood comes up here? Come on up, Brad. Brad has helped me work on the fire truck, get it ready. I bought it years ago just to water some fruit trees for my dad's property and had no idea we'd be using it like we are. Brad helped out that day. Gabe Saub, Mr. Pryor in the back there, a lot of these guys don't want to probably come up here, but it's the type of community we have, and having a fire truck was just, you know, by chance, and I had no idea that we would constantly be of use. And it's a good feeling to be able to help out, and I don't think I should get any recognition because I feel like recognition is, my benefit is, all the people get help doing what I love doing. And it's, I just want to thank everyone for taking the time coming here. I want to make sure everyone knows that Brad and several other people helped out that are not here. And thank you.
Great, thank you. So let's get all the students up then. Thank you very much. So we're going to have to do some, do we have the Clayton Valley students as well? Missing some taller people. Do you want to go in the back row?
So we want Diablo View Middle School here, and then the high school. So this is, the middle row is all Diablo View.
Yep. Wow.
Hold your certificates up so they show your names.
Hold your, whoops.
Turkey. Oh, there we go. Okay, everybody, big breath, let it out and a big smile. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to our regular agenda, which starts with reports.
Where are they going? This is the fun part.
I know, you can say. So I think we have Mr. Shapiro here for the Planning Commission.
You know, we now have three members at the Planning Commission here.
I'm sorry? Yeah.
Of course. AJ, you've been pushed offstage. You've been pushed offstage, so you got bumped.
The mic is yours.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm AJ Shapiro, Vice Chair of the Clayton Planning Commission. On October 22nd, we voted four to one to recommend the city council approves amending the Clayton Municipal Code to allow for the keeping of chickens, specifically hens, not roosters, in Clayton. City staff recommended one hen per 1,000 square feet of property with a maximum of 10 hens that are contained within an enclosure not to exceed 100 square feet. Staff recommended setbacks of a minimum of 50 feet from the front of the property and 20 feet from the side and rear property lines. Some of the commissioners felt the side and rear setbacks were too restrictive, and we proposed to change them from 20 feet to 10 feet. Staff recommended the enclosure height not to exceed 12 feet. A majority of the commissioners felt a maximum height of eight feet would have less of a visual impact. In the staff presentation, it was worded that the amendment only applied to the city's single-family residential districts. The Planning Commission asked for clarification that the ordinance would apply to detached single-family residences in planned development districts in addition to the city's single-family residential districts. And again, we approved to forward the recommendation by a four-to-one vote. Any questions?
Great, thank you very much for the report. So we don't have a Trails and Landscape Committee report. Do we have a report from our city manager, Mr. Sobranti?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick items. One, I want to let you know, the two of you that are on the Budget Committee or the Finance Subcommittee, we are closing in on the closeout of the fiscal year 2018-19. We will soon be able to have a Finance Subcommittee meeting. We're expecting that in a week or two. I know that's been a little overdue. I wanted to let you know that that's coming. Also, we do have one resignation that just came in for the Planning Commission, so staff will begin advertising for that position at the earliest possible date and be bringing back those candidates to you at a future council meeting for your interview and consideration.
Great, thank you. And we'll go to council reports. Mr. Wong, you want to start?
Sure. Since our last meeting, we had our Land Use Subcommittee meeting, the inaugural event. In that meeting, we talked a lot about accessory dwelling units and the very limited options that we have for acting in that space, and I think that our recommendation was that staff bring back, bring back some language that we could look at to craft a future ordinance. We also had the, I'm not sure what time that was, we also had the, we discussed, I think, in closed session, some of the things that are coming up on the agenda, so.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yes. On October 16th, I attended a Contra Costa Transportation Authority meeting where we got an update on where our transportation expenditure plan was, and we did the routine things that CCTA does. On the 17th, I attended the Stand Against Domestic Violence Luncheon, which is always a really inspirational event, and this organization serves a really strong role in our community for helping those that are victims of domestic violence. On the 18th, I attended the Association of Bay Area Governments Housing Methodology Committee, which will begin monthly meetings now to figure out how we will allocate the regional housing needs assessment for this cycle and what formula we will use in criteria for assigning those housing numbers. We expect the housing number coming from the state to probably be close to double what it was in the last at the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, getting ready for sending things to the full authority meeting, which took place on the 30th. And at that time, the Contra Costa Transportation Authority approved the transportation expenditure plan and forwarded it and all the necessary documents to the Board of Supervisors requesting them place it on the ballot for our March election. That passed unanimously, and just as a side note, it passed unanimously in all 19 cities and at the Board of Supervisors to approve the plan and recommend it to the ballot. The next action is for the Board of Supervisors to take action to place it on the ballot. That takes two meetings, so just before Thanksgiving, they will actually take their final action to place it on the March ballot. And then the 27th through the 30th of October, I attended the National Association of Regional Council's National Board Meeting as the representative from the Association of Bay Area Governments.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Okay. Attended the Library Foundation meeting on the 16th and then on the 19th, attended the Clayton Theatre Company Young Frankenstein. So that was, that was a great show. I would recommend everybody go see the Clayton Theatre Company shows. They're really quite good. And then the, participated in the PSPS conference calls the week of the 28th with PG&E and other agencies from around the state, including CAL FIRE and all the other public service agencies surrounding the PSPS shut offs around the state. And I want to talk a little bit more about PG&E in a little while. During that time that we were having this PSPS events, I think that it's important that we give a shout out to both the Chief Warren and to our Assistant to the City Manager, Laura Hoffmeister, for keeping us informed as best as could be done during that period of time. I know we also, I saw Councilmember Wong's post. I set out posts myself, trying to keep people informed. And again, I do want to talk a little bit more about this later on when the time is right. Spent a lot of time this week or last week with regard to emailing citizens. Have one that I need to pass on to the, to the chief with regard to the yield sign near the Clayton Fountain and what they're saying blatant disregard for that sign and near collisions on a daily basis, so I'll talk to the chief about that. Let's see, had my weekly meeting with our city manager, our interim city manager, and I think, yes, that's all for right now.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Diaz?
Couple of things. Number one, only two meetings attended. One was the Clayton Business Community Association, Community Association General Membership Meeting on the 24th. Then along with Vice Mayor Pierce and I met with the city manager, interim city manager on the first to discuss a internal managerial and administrative matter, and secondly, to discuss the pre-city council meeting. Two comments that I wish to make regarding a couple of things. One, that didn't get mentioned about John Koshavi and the volunteer Morgan Territory Fire Unit that's out there. He has a, his own fire truck, which he bears the total cost of by himself. It has a big number of 51 on it and it's yellow and it's usually in our Fourth of July Parade and among other things. So he's always visible around town and very commendable that all of that expense that's related to that, he bears himself. Finally, today I did get a chance to debrief with outgoing Planning Commissioner Bill Gall, and he wishes to express his gratitude to the city council, the staff, and all those for the work he did while he was able to do that on the, on the Planning Commission. And he's having other pressing matters that have taken over since, one has been since the pastor where he serves as deacon was unexpectedly, unexpectedly in a fatal traffic accident, and Bill has been taking on some more administrative duties on behalf of the Diocese of Oakland. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So a couple of items for me. On Monday, October 28th, I attended the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy Board Meeting where I serve with other city council members and mayors. Then on Tuesday, October 29th, I also attended the Land Use Subcommittee where we talked about ADUs. On Friday, November 1st, I had an after-hours visit and tour with a small group of boys from PAC 262, Boy Scouts. They were learning about civics and our city organization, so we toured and we had our Community Development Director, who was still at work at seven o'clock on Friday, by the way, but he had the pleasure of hearing us chatter and go through what our city is all about. And then Saturday, November 2nd, I held mayor's office hours from nine to 11:00. So I think with that, we are done with reports. We'll move on to public comment, which is for non-agenda items. This is the portion of the meeting when any member of the public can speak on any item that's not on the agenda. I do not have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to speak, come on up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and we'll go on to our first public hearings, item 7A, which is a public hearing to consider the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend section 6.05.010, 17.16.020B, and 17.28.60 of the Clayton Municipal Code to allow the keeping of chickens with restrictions in single-family residential districts and detached single-family residential neighborhoods in planned development zoning districts. I believe we have a report from Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mayor Catalano and city council members. You provided a very nice summary of this item that's before you tonight, but I'd like to give a little bit of background as to how we got here and where we're moving forward to perhaps. As you know, currently, it's not permissible to have chickens, to keep chickens within the city of Clayton. However, over time, staff and council members have heard from citizens an interest in keeping chickens for hobby purposes, really not commercial purposes, but for hobby interest purposes. And because of that, staff did some research to find out what other communities are doing with respect to keeping chickens in their communities. We've prepared a schedule, which is attached to your staff report. I think you'll notice that most communities here in Contra Costa County do allow the keeping of chickens with certain restrictions. The restrictions have to do with the number, the location, setbacks, those sorts of factors. Essentially, the idea is to allow for the keeping of chickens while at the same time minimizing impacts to neighbors. So we surveyed those communities, we looked at the county as to what the county is doing, and we came up with a recommendation that essentially, I think, blended county provisions and some of the provisions from some of the other cities. I should point out that the cities of Pittsburgh and San Pablo are the only other two communities in Contra Costa County that don't permit the keeping of chickens. And that the jurisdictions of Danville, Arinda, and San Ramon have adopted county standards allowing with restrictions the keeping of chickens. So what we provided to the Planning Commission, as the vice chair described, we provided some recommendations to the Planning Commission as to, under what circumstances would there be a balance for keeping of chickens within the city of Clayton? And I'd like to read those to you, and then I'll go forward and talk a little bit about the modifications to the staff recommended restrictions that the Planning Commission is recommending to you tonight. Our staff recommendations were hens only, no roosters, that there be one hen per 1,000 square feet of lot area up to a total of 10 hens. Now, the county allows for up to 20. That the chickens be contained with an enclosure not to exceed 100 square feet in area and a maximum of 12 feet in height. That the enclosure be set back a minimum of 50 feet from a front property line and 20 feet from side or rear property lines. That the food provided to the chickens be contained within a receptacle to minimize the attraction of rodents. And finally, that the enclosure and related area be maintained and regularly cleaned. So those were the staff recommendations. The Planning Commission took public comment, discussed, and then came up with some modified recommendations, restrictions that are included in the proposed ordinance for you tonight. So I'll review those with you. They're similar, but a little bit different. Planning Commissioners agreed that there should be hens only, no roosters in terms of noise impacts. They agreed with the one hen per 1,000 square feet of lot area. Keep in mind, here in Clayton, our residential districts range typically from 10,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet in area. The standard single-family residential districts range in those sizes. As indicated by staff or suggested by staff, the Planning Commission supported a maximum of 10 hens or chickens. And with respect to an enclosure, there was some discussion, and we actually had an individual who keeps chickens, actually lives in Concord, but she provided a lot of good feedback, I think, to the Planning Commission and talked about how, yes, the hens or chickens would be within enclosure, but it's also helpful for them to get out and exercise and whatnot. So the Planning Commission suggested that this provision, this restriction be generally contained, emphasizing generally contained within enclosure to allow for the hens to get out periodically for exercise. And that, yes, up to 100 square feet in area for the enclosure would be appropriate as recommended by staff, but perhaps it should be lower, not 12 feet as the county has and as was recommended by staff, but a little bit lower, maybe eight feet. And that with respect to the setbacks, the Planning Commissioners felt that the recommended 20-foot setbacks to side and rear as recommended by staff might be a little bit too restrictive, that given some of the lot sizes here in our community, in the city of Clayton, where say in our 10 district, in our 12 district, there are 10-foot side yard setbacks, aggregate 20, that it may be advisable to reduce that 20-foot setback to allow more practically for property owners to be able to put an enclosure in their backyard. So their suggestion is 50 feet from the front property line and then set in, set in 10 feet on either side and the rear. Food would be placed in a containment receptacle in the enclosure and related area regularly cleaned and maintained. And yes, at the Planning Commission meeting, we had come in discussing our standard single-family residential districts, but we pointed out to the Planning Commission that we have here in Clayton a large number of planned development districts that have detached single-family residential dwellings and that we should make sure that these amendments to the Municipal Code cover those properties as well. They agreed. So the idea here is that with these suggested restrictions, this would be by complaint only. I mean, if there's a concern that somebody isn't abiding by these restrictions, one could contact our code enforcement officer, our code enforcement officer would work with the animal control group from the county and follow up. We expect that as part of the regular duties of the code enforcement officer, that these provisions of the code could be enforced. And as the Planning Commission pointed out, currently, there are no such provisions. And currently, there are no doubt some keeping of chickens within the community. So it would provide an opportunity really to kind of guide how people could keep chickens within the community, again, a small number, up to 10, one per 100 square feet, trying to keep the enclosure down to reduce visual impacts, trying to make sure that the food is within a receptacle and properly, and the site is properly maintained. So I think the Planning Commission's recommendation here to the city council balances the opportunity for property owners to keep a small number of hens for hobby purposes really, and at the same time mitigate potential impacts to neighbors. So with that, our staff tonight is recommending that you receive our report, ask us clarifying questions, open up the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, discuss the matter. And we are recommending that you move forward tonight and introduce the ordinance attached to your staff report and approve first reading. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like there are some questions. Councilmember Wolf?
Okay. My first question would be, does this fall under the ADU? No, never mind. The grandfathering in of people that already have chickens and in their yards, whether one or 10 or 15, whatever they have, there are several I know that are closer than 10 feet right now. The coop, whatever you call it, is closer than 10 feet. Are we grandfathering those in or are they going to need to make some changes, provided we pass this?
Staff is not anticipating that these areas that you described would be grandfathered in. Staff is suggesting that these restrictions be the guidelines and that there be some changes made to conform with these guidelines. So we are not recommending that existing chicken coops be grandfathered in, but rather that there be modifications done to conform with these standards.
If I could just follow up on that, I think one of the points that David made earlier was this will be a complaint-driven process. So if neighbors are getting along well, we're not going to go out seeking areas where there may be someone that's out of compliance, but if someone does complain, this would be the guidelines we would hold them to.
Okay. And are we, are we doing anything with regard to eggs here? If people are giving away eggs, I understand that's fine, but if they're selling them, that would be a business. How would that work with this?
Well, in the code, in the city's code, there is the allowance for some commercial activity in residential neighborhoods. So in terms of if the eggs are sold, they would need to conform with those provisions in our code. Again, the idea here is a limited number of hens, no roosters. This is more of a hobby for a family, a household to enjoy. There's no expectation that this would be a larger commercial operation. The eggs could be given away, they could be sold.
Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yeah, I was contacted by a resident who has a next-door neighbor that has chickens, and he did not mention whether or not they had any roosters or a rooster. And I know that this is a complaint-driven process. Have we had any complaints relative to having a rooster?
We have not had any complaints that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And again, as the interim city manager mentioned, this is really going to be complaint-driven, and the idea is to provide some guidelines.
Right.
For people so that they can enjoy the keeping of hens.
Because that was the one concern that several residents had expressed to me, was the fact roosters had to be excluded, so that's good. Let me ask this, in the report that we received, it's 20 feet, but yet in the presentation again, it's 10 feet. What are we gonna, I'm just asking for a clarification. What are you recommending? Because we're gonna have to modify one or the other.
Yeah. The, the Planning Commission is recommending, and staff supports that, 10-foot would be the side and rear setbacks. And so to clarify, staff initially recommended to the Planning Commission a 10-foot side and rear setback. The commissioners, based on public input and their own discussion, felt that the 20-foot setback would limit property owners' ability to place an enclosure in a rear yard and conform with the standards. They felt that, that a 10-foot setback would give property owners more flexibility to actually enjoy the keeping of a small number of hens on the property. We support that modification to 10 for side and rear.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have two questions.
I have two questions. So one of the suggested restrictions is that one hen per 1,000 square feet of lot area. There are some properties that have fairly small lots, or that the property occupies, the building occupies most of the lot. So when you say one hen per 1,000 square feet, are you saying one per 1,000 square feet of unimproved lot area, or just lot area in general?
It's lot area in general. So for example, if you have a 10,000-square-foot lot here in the city of Clayton, and let's say your footprint on your home is 2,500 square feet, let's say, we'd be looking at the gross area, the 10,000 square feet, and again, one per, 1,000 up to 10. So they could have 10 hens in that case.
Okay. But we still have the setback requirement, so it probably works out.
Yes.
But then my other question is, I think chickens fly, too. So when you say, when you say generally contained in an enclosure, would you interpret that to mean that they have to still be within a fenced area? In other words, you can't put them on your front yard that isn't fenced?
Right. We would expect, given that the front setback is 50 feet from front property line, that typically you're looking at the hens being located in a rear yard area, and that there would be an enclosure, that the hens typically would be in the enclosure, but there would be times when they would get out and range in the backyard area. And as we had a very enthusiastic individual who keeps chickens on her property, she mentioned to us that she felt the one per 1,000 square feet was generous, in a way, in terms of allowing enough space for the hens to get around, and she said that, you know, oftentimes, unless frightened, or scared, or limited space, they typically wouldn't fly that much. Not that they would never fly, but typically would not be flying unless they're frightened or have very limited space. She felt, as a keeper of hens and chickens, that our proposed restrictions were reasonable, and that we wouldn't have an issue, not that it wouldn't occur at times, but it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, great. Seeing no other questions, let's open up a public comment. I do not have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, come on up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, but go ahead.
Ms. Knapp, who, one of the teachers here, who presented, and originally brought the issue to council, she had to leave, but she sent me comments. Does it matter? Are we interested in hearing her comment? She emailed it to me, although it's an image, so I have to turn my screen to the side here. So I'm gonna try and paraphrase and do it justice. So she said that she was excited that this is, this opportunity is moving forward. As a teacher, she looks at this as a learning experience for her students and the people of Clayton. It gives a sense of responsibility for young folks. She says she, what we may not be aware of is that, in her talking with over 100, 100 or more residents, that they were not aware that this, that chickens were prohibited, and so changing the rule is consistent with what most people already think it is. And she recommends that we move forward into adopting the ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, we'll close public comment and just bring it up for the council for any discussion.
I think that the planning commission did a great job, I'm sorry. The planning commission did a great job with regard to the setbacks and the height and everything here. I received several emails, and I know I saw some chatter on social media with regard to chickens overwhelmingly supporting the idea that we allow chickens in this rural community of Clayton, and Ms. Knapp makes some good points there. I'm concerned, of course, that we're opening up to some neighbors now complaining now that they have the right to complain, but nevertheless, I'm supportive of the way this is written.
Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, I'm, it's time we do this. When we banned them years ago, it was because we had several complaints, and it was becoming a code enforcement issue. It has become far more commonplace throughout the county. I get regular comments, probably at least one a week, from somebody that says, why can't we have chickens? When are you going to let us have chickens legally? And these are mostly folks who went ahead and did it, even after I told them, and I said, it's long, so if anybody complains, who's gonna know? But anyway, so I am totally in favor of this. I believe the planning commission did a really good job. They limited the height to the same height as we have limited our sheds, so there's some consistency there, the setbacks are similar, and so I think this is entirely consistent with what we have done in the past for other issues. And I am totally in favor and ready to make a motion anytime anybody's ready.
Councilmember Wong.
I just want to say, I, when this issue came up, I think both you and I asked for it to come back, and so I want to thank the planning commission also. I think they did a great job in assessing the relevant issues and making recommendations, so I think that's great. You know, we banned, the city banned it, I think, I looked, back in 2006. And at the time, one of the reasons given, I actually, I requested the minutes from one of the older meetings just to read about it, and one of the reasons was to be consistent with the county at the time. I think that the people were in a different place back then. And then, so when we brought the ordinance, when we looked at our animal control ordinances again in 2018, the beginning of 18.
Yeah.
We also expressed the intent to be consistent with the county at that time. I think unbeknownst to us, we were moving at the same time, and the county was simultaneously making, passing their ordinance, allowing chickens. So this is really consistent with that, and I think, you know, with our, the character of the city, and just with the number of folks that I already know that may have chickens themselves, I think this is, this is a good move, and so I'm supportive.
Okay. I'm also very supportive. I think it is time that we do this, and like was mentioned, I think many of us citizens do have chickens already, so it's good that we are regulating it and officially allowing it. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I would move to have the city clerk read the ordinance by title and number only and waive further reading.
Second.
So that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes also unanimously. So thank you. So we'll move on to our action items. We have two. Our first item is 8A, which is consideration of participation in the United Against Hate Week, and this is an item that you have a memo from me in your packets, along with a draft resolution. So let me give you a little bit background on this. So I think increasingly, you look at pretty much any statistic, sort of the rhetoric of hate, as well as hate crimes, have increased in the last few years. A couple of years ago, in the city of El Cerrito, they had an actual hate crime that the community reacted to very strongly in opposition, and they started a movement called Not in Our Town. And I think that movement then moved on and created this United Against Hate Week that is now, I believe it's officially being celebrated in November as a week for the second time. Last year, 24 different Bay Area communities and jurisdictions took part of it. And what it really does is just, it's a recognition against any hate or discrimination against any minorities, and really acknowledging that as a community, we ought to be celebrating our diversity, and we do better as a community because of diversity, by being inclusive overall. So what I have in front of you is, I took a look at the different resolution and proclamations different cities around us, around Bay Area had done. It's been done a little bit differently in different cities. Some cities have done just the proclamation by the mayor, and in other cities, they've done a resolution by the entire council. So I took a look at a number of different mechanisms and drafted essentially a resolution, kind of picking some of the parts in, from other, other documents from other cities. So what I'm asking the council to do, after we take public comment, is to support the resolution and approve it, so that we, as the city of Clayton, can support the United Against Hate Week, which is celebrated on November 17 through 23rd this year. So I'll, I do have one speaker card, but if there are any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a question. Just for my clarification, what actions does it call for from the city itself? Or is it more of a recognition, or is it, is there any actual, I guess, actions that we would take in accordance with the proclamation?
Yeah, so I think, so it, for other cities, for some cities, it's been just a proclamation or resolution to support and acknowledge the movement. In other cities, they've actually organized events, you know, during that week to, you know, whether it's showing of movies or something like that. I don't think we have anything on our agenda for that, but, and then, you know, there are posters that are available for distribution. So I think it just depends on the city. I don't think there's anything called for specifically, but I think what I'm asking from this council is just support and joining, joining in the participation of that week. Go ahead.
Yeah, this was brought up at the mayor's conference this month, and what was suggested was, these are making policy statements about how we feel about these issues, and, and basically taking a stand, saying that, that we believe in the things that are here in the resolution. It wasn't specifically requiring any overt action, other than to state that we are supportive, supportive of this movement.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up a public comment. I do have one speaker card. Glenn Miller, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I hope to clarify Ms. Pierce and Mr. Wong's concerns in my remarks. The background information for this resolution gives at its premise a specific worldview, and calls for Unified Against Hate Week, and by its own text, states that there are to be seven days of undefined civic action in response to explicit displays of hatred against people of color, women, the LGBTQI community, immigrants, and others. And it further states it contends and plans civic action to stop implicit biases that are dangerous and a threat to the safety and civility of our neighborhoods, towns, and cities. These statements in this resolution raise several questions. Why this group? Why does, why does this view represent us? Whom do they not represent? Who defines hate, and what are the implicit biases? Who are the others? What is the civic action is called for, and against whom is it to be undertaken? By virtue of this council's action, like it or not, you are becoming an advocate for a particular worldview against all quote-unquote "others," or a partner for a particular movement versus another. I ask you, condoning these actions to be taken in Clayton against others noted in this resolution, are those to tech, are those to marginalize those that might otherwise disagree with this group's views? It would seem so. What about the folks that just want to go about their lives and just want to be left alone? Can we discuss this hate which this movement is unified against? Per Webster, it is verb that describes one strong dislike or ill will, a dislike towards someone or something. Note that this definition says nothing about taking action or marginalizing others who might think differently, but this is what the implicit bias words and others seem to indicate. For example, I strongly dislike the Giants. Sorry, I'm an A's fan. If this group decides, shall we make a proclamation, start a movement, and proclaim a week dedicated to my shaming and civil action, say, for example, burning an A's flag? Who gets to decide who the haters are and what is appropriate civic action? What about these, what about this term implicit biases that's contained in the resolution? Surely, this concept is a bit more difficult to explain, and as used in this resolution, since it's entirely subjective, but it let me try to explain this issue with an illustration. I am a Christian. I believe that Jesus is my Lord and Savior, and I am to be obedient as commanded by His Word, to commit myself to follow and hold to the biblical teachings of the Scriptures and the truths as contained in the Bible. As a result of these teachings, this means I believe in God as a Creator, and in His order and definitions of life as witnessed in Genesis 1 through 3. In the pursuit of the faith, I also walk in the way as taught in Ephesians 5, and acknowledge and accept His grace, His mercy, and fear His judgment of my sin, including calling out immorality, as defined all throughout the Old Testament, and more specifically, as to what it is and what my response should be, as set forth in Romans, in Romans 8.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Shut up. I'm so, I'm, am I guilty of hate? How about these implicit biases? You now see the conundrum with this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We want to provide-
You're gonna cut me off?
We provide every member of the public up to three minutes to speak. Thank you for your comments.
You're gonna cut me off?
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you so much. There, there you go. Here's your, here is your implicit biases, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Here is a copy of my remarks as I intended to read. Please.
I do not have any other speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to speak, come on up. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Basam Al Twal. I'm an immigrant in this country 25 years ago, and I want to talk about hate. I'm also a Christian.
Can you speak to the microphone?
I'm an Catholic, and I lived through two civil wars. I had a gun pointing to my head when I was 12 years old. I witnessed six people murdered in front of me, because they were from a different, either religion, or color, or something else. If we don't stand against hate, that is the future of what I just explained to you. It's important to put our positions down. It's important to show everybody we love everybody, and to quote Scripture as well, and what Christ said is, love thy neighbor. Love everybody, and there's no position of hate everywhere else. I came to this country to escape those atrocities, and I love where I am right now, and I love what we are doing, and thank you for this resolution.
Thank you.
Do you want a card? Bring you a card?
Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it up to the council for any discussion.
Second.
I actually had, I just wanted to say, I, so I wasn't familiar with the movement because I didn't attend, but I did take a moment to kind of look through some of the history. I asked our interim city manager about, you know, the organization. I'm certainly supportive of stating a position and being against the things that are described here. My only concern, and it's not even a real strong one, is that it, I'm concerned about the appearance of partisanship in this organization, because they do seem fairly one-sided in their approach to things, which is fine. It's, it's, it's fine with them. But I think their overall message of, you know, tolerance and acceptance, and just calling out these things is laudable, so I'm, I think, I don't necessarily know if it's the revolution upon us, nor do I think comparisons to sporting teams is really analogous. I think those kind of missed the mark a little bit, but I do think it is important for us to take these types of actions, so.
Okay. And if you note the resolution itself, some of the text, you know, we are, what it's doing really is just proclaiming that that specific week would also be a United Against Hate Week in Clayton, so it's fairly generic. We're not asking anybody, the city's not asking anybody specifically to take any action, but it is really more of a policy stand against hate than anything else, as far as I see it. If there's no other comment, there's been a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. We'll then move on to item 8B, which is a consideration of approval of employment contract for our next city-
that about the appearance of partisanship in this organization, because they do seem fairly one-sided in their approach to things, which is fine. It's, it's, it's fine with them. But I think their overall message of, you know, tolerance and acceptance and just calling out these things is, is laudable. So I'm, I think, I don't necessarily know if it's the revolution upon us, nor do I think comparisons to sporting teams is really analogous. I think those kind of missed the mark a little bit, but I do think it is important for us to, to take these types of actions, so.
Okay. And if you note the resolution itself, some of the text, you know, we are, what it's doing really is just proclaiming that, that specific week would also be a United Against Hate Week in Clayton. So it, it's fairly generic. We're not asking anybody, the city is not asking anybody specifically to take any action, but it is really more of a policy stand against hate than anything else, as far as I see it. If there's no other comment, there's been a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. We'll then move on to item 8B, which is a consideration of approval of employment contract for our next city manager. So approval of an agreement between the city and Mr. Ikani Tomo-Pao. So I think we have a report from Mr. Sobranti. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you would bear with me, I do have a, a little bit of reading to do for the record, so I'm gonna begin with that. In the spring of 2019, longtime city manager Gary Napper announced his plans for retirement. Shortly thereafter, Clayton City Council entered into a contract with CPS HR Consulting to begin the recruitment process for a permanent replacement. CPS HR Consulting placed advertisements for Clayton City Manager, the Clayton City Manager position on 14 well-known professional websites. They also distributed information about the position to more than 3,000 professionals, referral sources, and potential candidates via email. And as a result, 33 highly qualified candidates from around the country provided resumes and cover letters expressing interest in the Clayton City Manager position. Working with the recruiter, the full city council carefully reviewed the merits of all 33 applicants and decided upon a list of top candidates to interview in person. Following the interviews, multiple personal references were interviewed by phone and background checks were completed on the top candidate, Ikani Tomo-Pao. So at the direction, again, of the full council, Mayor Catalano then began negotiating a, an employment contract agreement with Mr. Tomo-Pao. The agreement includes a starting salary of $199,000 per year, a city-provided life insurance policy of $200,000, a monthly car allowance of $400, a one-time relocation allowance of up to $12,500, and other paid leave, medical, and retirement benefits typical of City of Clayton employees. I do want to point out that there was one mistake that requires correction in the document that was put out. That particular document mistakenly showed the annual pay, paid administrative leave total at 96 hours per year. It is actually 120 hours per year, which is exactly the same as all other management positions within the City of Clayton. So with that, I do want to turn it back over to council for consideration, and of course, if there are any questions, I can help answer. Be happy to do that as well.
Okay. And this is obviously a topic where the full council has had a number of closed sessions. We interviewed a number of candidates. We met with Mr. Tomo-Pao as well, and then we had further discussions in closed session about sort of the hiring parameters. So are there any questions of staff that anybody would like to ask? I do have one speaker card, so, but, no? Okay. So let me open up a public comment. I do have a card from Mr. Miller.
While Mr. Miller's coming forward, if I could just say the city attorney has asked me to read into the record that the report that I gave served as the city council's report summarizing the final action on salary pursuant to the Brown Act.
Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Yes. First of all, I was kind of surprised to not see any biographical information on the person you selected. I did raise this to, you know, full disclosure, I did raise this to Councilmember Juan. He said I could look it up on the website. That's fine. I'm, I'm sure the person's fine. The, the issue I have, and you didn't read it in your, your summary, and maybe you've taken it out, is that full CalPERS was going to be provided. Am I wrong in, when I read that in the, the, the report that you had in the packet?
Go ahead, finish up your comments.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Go ahead, finish up your comments.
Well, if I'm not wrong, then you have full CalPERS as, as part of the compensation. And I just kind of wondered how responsible that would be. You've just gone through a period where you've taken funds and acknowledged that CalPERS is terribly underfunded. It has some big problems, and in fact, if you've, if you're a junkie like me, you've just seen the lady on CNBC, the CEO on CNBC, say they're not going to meet their funding, their investment goals this year and are going to be underfunded once again. So the question I have is not that I'm against giving the guy a retirement. I'm certainly for that. I think that is, is applicable compensation, but if, for some reason, the rules are, because he's in it, that you have to have him stay in CalPERS, then make him pay for, for that himself so that the City of Clayton is not obligated for the future responsibility of his, his contribution. That's all I'm suggesting. I mean, you've already acknowledged that, that there is, there is, there is an issue. There is a potential problem. And why, why compound that problem in this instance for, for future generations? All, you give him, give him his 401K? I don't, I don't care what you do, but I think it would really be, it's really short-sighted to, to involve just another personnel in CalPERS. You know, if he's got to be in it because he's in it now and he needs it to get through, then, then have that come out of his compensation and overcompensate, you know, provide a different compensation. You can make them whole. I'm not, I'm not telling you to not make them whole. I'm just saying, why put this new burden on the City of Clayton and the future citizens of Clayton? So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. Mr. Sobranti, do you want to address the CalPERS comment, please?
So it is a bit of a complicated question in terms of whether you have to require it. Because the entire city staff is part of CalPERS, you don't get the opportunity to isolate one person and take, take them out. But I can say that for the first time, this particular employee will be paying their full share of the employee portion of the CalPERS, which will be unlike several other employees within, within the city. So this person is actually taking the lead or, or leading by example, and paying more into, in this case, his CalPERS by percentage than any other employee.
Great, thank you. So we'll, hold, thank, thank you for your comment. So I want to, so we close public comment, so we'll bring it back to the council for any discussion. I do want to, so I had the pleasure of talking and connecting with Mr. Tomo-Pao several times over the last few weeks during the contract negotiations, so, and I connected with him earlier today as well, because knowing that the item was coming, coming up to the council and seeing if he had anything he wanted to share with the council. So I wanted to just read a small excerpt of what he sent to me earlier today, which says, "I'm incredibly excited about the opportunity to work for one of the best communities in the entire state and help it become even better with the community's help. I look forward to serving you and being a servant, a servant to city council, staff, and the community. Thank you for adopting me into the Clayton family and looking forward to meeting you all very soon." So that's what he said. And I'll, I'll add, and start with my comments. We all got to know him. We did background checks, very thorough search, and I think we were extremely lucky to find him. I'm personally very excited. I think he will be a great addition to Clayton and a great leader for Clayton, so I'm looking forward to him starting, provided we approve the contract tonight. His scheduled start day is December 9th, so he is going to be here in December, provided we approve the contract. But I'm very excited personally, but I'll let other council members chime in as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, like you, I, I am excited to, to have Ikani join us. You know, this is, this is a time of transition for our community. We had, we had a lot of qualified applicants. I want to thank every one of them who applied and those who made the final cut and, that we brought in for interviews. They were really, really good people. All of the people who applied were really good people, and I want to thank them all for their interest in Clayton and for applying. It was a difficult decision. We worked hard to get to a decision, and I am absolutely confident we made the right one, and really looking forward to have Ikani join us here in Clayton and become part of the community. And while I know he doesn't technically start until December 9th, it sure would be nice if he could be here for December 7th for the lighting of our town tree and participate in that annual tradition and get started with that kind of thing. And I have a funny feeling he might be on the other side of that camera, watching us from his home in Santa Paula, so.
So you don't want to, you don't want to talk about the hazing where he has to be, Santa?
No.
No.
No, Santa is already taken care of and, and that's all done, but Santa's already booked the reindeer for that night. But we would love to have Ikani join us if it works out for he and his family. It, it would be a, a great time to welcome him to our community, and we're looking forward to having him here.
Great. Councilmember Juan?
Yeah, I mean, I too want to thank all of the people who applied for the position. It was a fairly rigorous process, the, the whole of it taking place in closed session, so there's not a lot that we can talk about during the process, but I, I want to thank the applicants. I know that it's a rigorous ordeal to go through an application process. And I also want to thank, you know, my fellow council members, who I think throughout the entire process were very engaged, and we had, I think, very lively discussion about the candidates, and I think ultimately we came to where, where we are now, and I think that's the right decision. And so I, I just wanted to thank the, the process that we engaged in. I thought it was very, it was, it's very good. So anyways, as, as far as, just very quickly on CalPERS, you know, CalPERS is the promise that we make to our employees, and it is, it is expensive, and it's, it's, that's just how it is. And I think that when we make that promise, we, we need to stand behind it and, and make sure that we honor those obligations. And so to me, while it is an expensive promise, it is one that is worthwhile in the value that we get from our staff. So to me, I think that's, that's very important. You know, when we, when we met with Ikani over the, several times, I was, it was, it was almost infectious when you, he, in the level of engagement that he has. So I am looking forward to him starting with the city, and the sooner the better. Sorry.
That's right.
You're out. But, you know, I, I just, I, I think it's a great addition to the city, and I'm, I'm glad that we'll be able to do that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes, I too want to thank all of the candidates. I, I want to tell you that it was a very rigorous process, and we had some really stellar individuals come forward, and what ultimately the City of Clayton and its residents are going to benefit by having Ikani as our new city manager. We have gone through a very tumultuous time over the past year. We need somebody that's going to be a good, solid manager, strong in dealing with all of the issues. We have a number of positions that need to be filled once the city manager, the new city manager gets placed, and he will be very instrumental in working with the city council and making sure that we get the best candidates to fill all of our vacant positions or interim positions that we have. And I think that this community will see a very engaged individual, somebody that will be a very strong leader and one that will build the team that this community needs to go forward for the next several years. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Well, I echo everybody's comments and sentiments, and I, I actually enjoyed the process and working with all of you with regard to this, this hiring. I think the one thing that Ikani is going to bring, aside from being a great family man, and if, if you've seen his videos, it's, you know that he's a great family man, he'll be a very energetic presence in this town. And I think that's something that's sorely needed. He'll be a personality that, that we probably haven't seen before, and so I hope that he brings that infectious energy to us and, and that we can rub off a little bit on him as well. So I think, I think the, the community is going to enjoy having him here, and I hope he enjoys being here.
Great. So with that?
I would move approval of the city manager employment agreement with Ikani Tomo-Pao. I'll get it right. He told us to call him Ikani.
I wrote it down phonetically, yeah.
I did, I wrote it down, and then I put it away.
Tomo-Pao.
I'm gonna call him IT.
IT.
IT, all right, there you go. So I would move approval of that contract and say, "Welcome. Thank you very much, Ikani."
Second.
We have three seconds.
That's a competition for the second. So I don't know who you caught, but somebody. So it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously, and we welcome Mr. Tomo-Pao to our city. Great, thank you. So then we'll go on to item nine, which is, if there's any requests by council members for any future meetings.
I have.
I actually have one as well, yeah. Given what transpired over on Halloween in the City of Arinda, I would like us to take a look again at whether we should pass some regulations regarding Airbnbs. We declined to do that a couple of years ago because we really hadn't had any problems. I think it's time to address it and, and put some, some conditions in place so that everybody knows what the rules are. We have them in our town. We see the ads. When you look for something, you, you can find the ads for them and, you know, there, but for good luck, we, we could be in the same position as Arinda's in, and I, I really think it's time for us to look at that in the future.
Great, great idea.
It's really better to be proactive.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, I have, with regard, going back to this whole PSPS incident, the power safety shut-offs. First of all, I've signed up for every alert that is known to man. And by the way, there's another one, Nixle. If you text our zip code 94517 to 8887777, they're supposed to be sending you some emergency texts directly to you. I've signed up for all of these things, and there's, there was nothing during this PSPS event that was cohesive. It was, it was a confused mess, in my opinion. The, so I would like to have us consider those events that took place, especially during the first one. During the first one, they said, "We're going to send out messages to you." I don't know that that ever happened. I never got anything, maybe on Nextdoor more than anything else. I got some announcements and some alerts. And I know then we transferred a lot of those things and tried to get them out to the public as well, the people on the council did. But I didn't get anything directly from PG&E or from Nixle, from anybody.
I did. If you, if you sign up ahead of time, you can get them.
Yeah, I've signed up for, for everything. And then, so they, they said, "Well, we're going to have our resource center at, at Northgate High School." Then that was, "No, we're not going to have it there. We're going to move it to somewhere else." I think the confusion for Clayton is that we are not self-sufficient. We're, we're a small town out in, in the middle of what could be an earthquake zone or a fire zone, and, and our citizens are left out in, to fend for themselves or have Concord do it, or to rely on state information that comes late, if, if at all. So I, I would like to look at our goal-setting session down the road, that we take up some kind of public safety effort here with regard to making ourselves more self-sufficient Clayton, relying on Clayton. For instance, looking at the cost of maybe a generator system at some place yet to be determined, maybe the, the community gym, okay?
I think we have to hold this as a separate discussion. I think Mala is getting concerned we're going too far.
I was just indicating that there's a grant that the state has indicated for cities to purchase generators, so I was just leaning in, saying it was, it was, it's due on November 12th.
Okay. So, so as, just as a thought started then for, for our council, if not in the goal-setting session, to come back and take a look at what we can do to become more safe, conscious in our community, and so that our residents at Diamond Terrace or wherever, all of our residents know there is a place to go, they're going to be safe, and it's going to be within Clayton, at least something to take that pressure off, because there was a lot of confusion out there. And so maybe finding out what the costs of a generator, are there grants available? What, what can be done to, to build our own resource center? That's what I'm asking is.
I would just interrupt and say, if the due date is November 12, if you could look at that before, so, and see if it's possible to take action prior to the due date, I think that'd be consistent with what you're asking.
That is consistent with what I'm asking.
Great.
Please.
Go ahead.
Just real quick, so there has been some review of what that grant has to offer. I'm going to double-check tomorrow. What we understood from the first look that we had at it was that it wasn't an option for Clayton, but it's worth another look. And whatever we're going to do, we want to put everything together for you so that you can consider it as a set of options for everything-
can consider it as a set of options for everything at the goal-setting session that I would guess will fall sometime early 2020, so that whether it's public safety or dozens of other desires that the council has to improve Clayton, you have them all in front of you at the same time to prioritize. And I'm confident that Ikani's still watching, so I, I know that I won't be here at that point, but that's something that we'll be working to make that handoff smooth with a full list of ideas that you all have presented to me over the past few months.
Okay, and maybe you can add to that to-do list, that's a great idea, but, and we won't discuss it today, but a number of years ago, we had CERT, which was the Community Emergency Response Team. I believe that's what it was. It was fairly active in our community and had a number of people trained, I think, in that. I remember having gone through that training, but I don't think that they're fairly active, so maybe, maybe there's an interest within the community to kind of-
There is, there is. We've got some folks actually working on that. I would just comment, one of the things I noticed on, actually on social media this last week, was photos of Santa Paula with the fire at their border, just like it was at Windsor's border this last week. So he's been through the fire as well, so he's very, very aware of, of what these threats are and what we need to do in emergencies. So I suspect that he has personally experienced something far closer than what we actually had, and, and so my prayers are with the city of Santa Paula as well as they try to recover from the devastating fire that was right on their city limits.
And I just have one more quick thing, and that is along these same lines, you know, today, the, they came out with the, the mayors are taking a stand around the Bay Area with regard to PG&E's, whether they're going to be a viable company or whether they're going to be taken over publicly, and I think we should take a look at our position as a, as a city. I know we're very small, but we should add our voice, yea or nay, to that, to that stand, whether or not PG&E should be taken over by the cities.
I hadn't heard that.
It just came out today.
It just came out today.
The three mayors, the three big mayors.
Yeah, the mayors of San Lucado, I think, from San Jose is running-
San Jose, Oakland, and San Francisco.
Are, is authoring that.
I've been working today.
It was in the Chronicle this morning.
That's it.
Anything else?
Work gets in the way.
Okay, seeing none, we'll call the closed session. We have none, which means we are adjourned until our next meeting on November 19th. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.